Hello and good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 26, 2019, meeting of the Wakefield School Committee. As we like to call the meeting to order, and as we start meetings, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Also, as we do, I'd like to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their communities. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging our curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next is a public comment period, as we have every meeting. If any member of the public would like to address the school committee on any topic, whether it's on the agenda tonight or not, it's a time to do so. Please come up to the table, introduce yourself, and welcome.
Hi, my name is Lily Smith, and I am the student representative to the school committee. I have a couple things to report on, so please bear with me. Today, it was the sophomore MCAS day, so the freshman, junior, and senior all got to have a late start, which is always really nice, and it's the same for tomorrow. Spring sports just recently started up, and I know today the girls' lacrosse team had a scrimmage against North Reading, and they won. And the boys' lacrosse team has their first game on Friday at St. John's Prep. And this year, I'm a member of the track team, and there's been a huge track turnout. I've heard numbers going around, and the coaches say that there's about 160 kids doing it, so that's awesome.
Wow, that's big.
Last weekend was the senior show, and I've been going to that since, I think, eighth grade, and it was a really good show, and it's always interesting to see how talented the classes are. Best Buddy Awareness Week has been going on last week and into this week. In the cafeteria, there's a huge sign that says "Ditch the R-word," and students can go up and sign it, and so it's like taking a pledge. That's really nice. Another initiative a club has been heading up is the Mentors and Violence Prevention Leaders. I'm a part of that. We created the "These Hands Don't Hurt" mural, and that's also featured in the cafeteria. And that's basically a pledge to domestic violence, and you can trace your hand on it and sign your initials, so that's really nice to see in the school. And the Mentors and Violence Prevention Leaders are presenting that tonight at the White Ribbon Campaign Event, which is in the Savings Bank, and WAVE is heading that up. And last weekend, last week was Warrior Give Back Day, which is basically a day of volunteering hosted by the Student Council, and you go and just volunteer out in the community. I was a part of that. My friend is a Student Council Leader, and we went to the Melrose YMCA and basically just cleaned it up. It was a nice experience. And the Diversity Leaders have been really working hard on the Megan S. Burnett Maker Space. I know Ms. Burke came in and got that approved, so we've been really enjoying painting it and just transforming the whole space. It's a nice experience. On the same topic of Diversity Leaders, the Wakefield Vigil was last week, and Diversity Leader Aiden Beck spoke on it and like basically talked about the Diversity Leader Mission, and I didn't personally go, but I heard it went really well. So that's all I have.
Well, that's a wonderful report. Thank you very much. Any questions? No, no, Lily, don't leave yet.
Sorry.
No, don't leave yet.
We really don't bite.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Lily? Chris?
You just mentioned the Maker Space. When do you think that might be completed and in use?
Um...
Is it gonna be this year or will it be next year?
Yeah, it's definitely gonna be this year. It's taking a little longer than we expected to like paint everything, and we're doing this, it's a stenciling of like just words that say, for example, "create." That's, that's taking a lot longer than we expected as well.
But I just wasn't sure if it was this year or in the fall.
Yeah, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen this year, for sure.
Oh, good.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
How late did you sleep today?
Um, I slept until 9:30.
That's not bad.
What time do you usually get up, though?
What did you say?
What time do you usually get up?
Six.
Enjoy the extra sleep?
Yes.
There you go. Good, 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 good.
I heard about a waffle party.
A lot of kids are going out to breakfast, so that's good.
Well, that's great. Well, thank you for a very thorough report. You're certainly most welcome to stay and contribute to the conversation as the evening goes on, but if you have other homework or other things to do, we certainly want to allow you the freedom to choose that, but thank you for a great report.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lily.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Scott Farber. I'm a Wakefield resident with three students in the Wakefield Public Schools, and I just wanted to come tonight with my family to discuss, as we are getting in the process of preparing next year's calendar, to discuss again with the school committee the option of giving consideration to giving off Jewish holidays for next year's school calendar. I was contacted by another Wakefield resident and school committee candidate, Suzie Vayer, recently, who had brought it up at a previous topic, and tried to get feedback from other Jewish Wakefield residents about how it affects us and the need for having it done. And my daughter is going to speak also tonight about how it affects her as a, as a student. I can speak to how it affects a parent who sends kids to school in Wakefield, and often, on the first or second day of school, has to be given a choice whether to remove your child, children from school, or to send them and skip out on celebrating the holiest of holidays for a Jewish family. During those days, we are not home, sitting, taking a day off. We are spending most of the day in our temple praying, and then spending the remainder of the afternoon typically with families celebrating the, the holiday. Often, our first communication with a teacher in the Wakefield Public Schools is, "Hello, my name is Mr. Farber or Mrs. Farber, and we're Jewish, by the way, so my children will not be in school tomorrow or the next day." And it's, we understand that there's a policy for Wakefield schools that there is to be no homework given and no test given the next day, but we find it to be, as you speak to Wakefield residents who are faced with this dilemma, we find it to be a very inconsistent policy, where typically you have to ask the teacher to follow the policy first before it's done. They do not understand that it is a policy given. So we ask that there is consideration given to giving off at least the first day of that holiday off for families, or to change the policy of how the teachers and administrators in our school system are instructed to follow these policies, because there is an inconsistency to that happening right now. And with that, I guess I will let my daughter do the rest of the work.
My name is Jenna Farber, and I'm 11 years old and in fifth grade at the Galvin Middle School. I am here with my parents, Lee and Scott, my sister Maya, a third grader, as well as my brother Nathan, a first grader, both at Woodville. Every fall, we as Jewish people welcome the Jewish New Year, also known as Rosh Hashanah, and atone for our sins during the holiday of Yom Kippur. These holidays are observed during the day at temple services for several, several hours each day and at night for celebratory dinners with family and friends. It is a big deal. They are considered to be our high holidays, the holiest of our holidays we observe. These holidays follow the Hebrew calendar, so they change when they fall each year. One year, Rosh Hashanah was, was on the first day of school. However, more often, they are in the middle or end of September. Being Jewish is an important part of who I am. It is a big part of my identity. I attend Jewish overnight camp each summer for a month, and there I participate in shared experiences that foster love for my religion and reinforce that I am proud to be Jewish. Here at home, it is different. Wakefield holds school during the Jewish holidays, so myself, my siblings, many other Wakefield Jewish children and their families, as well as Jewish Wakefield teachers, are asked to choose between school and celebrating the holidays with their families. This is, this is something my non-Jewish friends do not have to do. In our temple, Temple in Peabody, more than half of the students in first and third grade classes are from Wakefield. There are a few students in nearly each grade who come from our town as well. There are Jewish kids here. We are being raised to be proud of who we are, and we are asking for something that, in my mind, seems kind of simple. We are being asked to be given the same rights that our non-Jewish friends are given. We like to celebrate our most important holidays with family and friends without the worry that they are missing, that we are missing important schoolwork, tests, events, and such, and the pressure of having to make those things up when we return. As you think about and discuss the Wakefield Public Schools' calendar for next year, I ask you to seriously consider how you might feel if we were your kids. What would you do if your most valued holidays were on school days? Would you send your kids to school? Would you keep them home and have them share in with the celebrations? What message does each option send? Please know that I am grateful for the chance to share my thoughts on this and to be given the chance to help, to help make a change for myself and other Jewish families in Wakefield. As Ann Frank said, "How wonderful it is that nobody needs to wait one single moment to start improving the world." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, ladies.
Nicely done, girl.
Very nicely done. Well, certainly, Mr. and Mrs. Farber have a lot to be proud of. Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we shall move on. The consent agenda, we have a motion. Mr. Callanan?
I move the school committee approve the minutes of the March 12, 2019, school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, next, item number seven, the FY '20 budget. Tonight is a time for us to deliberate the budget. We've heard, two weeks ago was our public hearing, a month ago tonight was the superintendent's presentation of the budget. We know the superintendent and his team have been busy at it for probably four or five months now, so certainly I'll open the floor to discussions or questions.
Should have a motion first, and then discussion.
Oh, yeah, sure, that's great. Mr. Callanan, motion.
I move the school committee approve the Wakefield Public Schools FY '20 budget recommendation as presented.
Second.
Second, and discussion. So now is the time for us to provide comments around the table, to ask questions of the superintendent, the business administrator, and each other. Members, who would like to go first? Ron, RJ, sure.
First of all, I just want to point out, I know it hides control, but good job to Doug and Mike for finding savings, negative .64 with the Special Education Department this year. Thought that was very impressive, so. And secondly, like I told Doug in the, in the Finance Subcommittee, 4.75% does kind of sound high, but we kept operational increases, I think, to a reasonable .48%. And I think that, you know, as a first-year superintendent, I think you should be granted a little bit of wiggle room, just to address some of your priorities coming in first year. So with that being said, 4.92 for personnel estimated is, you know, pretty high, and with the union negotiations coming up this year, we do have to be careful so that, you know, increases are a little more modest that way. For the next three years, we could still have room for like slight operational priorities and kind of work to get the overall increase down a bit, so we can either, one, address operational priorities, or, two, provide some savings, you know, to the town and the taxpayers. I'll leave it with that. Good job, though.
Other, other members? Comments, questions? Yes, Chris?
Again, first of all, good job. I did come in and meet with Doug and talk about a few of the, the ideas that were presented to us during our discussions with, with the public, and I think I'm comfortable with the rationale that I received, that while we do have an increase in personnel expenses, a lot of that is coming because we're bringing programs and students back into district, so that there's actually a net savings on, on that part of the, on the budget. You know, we're not putting as many students that may have to, not as many students having to leave the district to get their education. We're able to accommodate them here at home. It requires more personnel to do that, but we're not paying an outside source for that, so I think the personnel increases make a lot of sense. While I do sympathize with the requests for MSNs in places like the Walton, I understand that we really, the support for that just is, we just can't, I don't think there are enough students in need of those services at that school that really require a full-time person. That Walton School is, because of its size, does not house any special programs, and therefore, it's hard to compare its course of studies with, the larger schools do have some more specialized, special ed programs within them. And, you know, I think the operational pieces are where they belong, and I can fully support this, this budget. I was present last night at the presentation to the Board of, the Town Council, excuse me, and I think it was well-received in that format, and I think we're in a place that we can, should be comfortable with.
Having worked on the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, I, you know, I got a front-row seat in a lot of the machinations of how the sausage is made, I guess. So I can appreciate the, the real concerted effort in being creative in terms of looking at the priorities from your perspective, Doug, and then sort of driving those priorities by working with what we have, reconstituting when needed, and working through some of the asks from the building principals or the directors, and really forcing them to think, prioritize, and make sure that what they're asking for isn't simply an ask, but it is related to a very specific need that must be met. There are the have-tos, and there are the want-tos. And I, the way I see this budget is that these are all have-tos, particularly with respect to the asks. Being a member of the Student Services Subcommittee, which was our inaugural year, you know, certainly thanks to Amy in putting forth that, I, we learned a lot in terms of really honing down what our families, particularly those with students on educational plans, as well as teachers, need in those really difficult transition times, you know, fourth to fifth grade, and then eighth to ninth grade in particular is what we studied. And we found that a lot of the students need not just information, but they need a lot of emotional and psychological support, and that really is a, a big piece of the new positions that you have, which I am fully supportive of. And not just because it sure is nice if someone's having a bad day, that they can talk to someone, but we're talking real need that gets in the way of learning and on a consistent basis. And I find that these positions are going to be supporting not just those kids on educational plans, but, but all of our students in some way. So I, I'm particularly pleased with that. I, I know that sometimes people worry about our budget being so sort of personnel-heavy, you know, the hugest chunk, 80% is related to what we spend on salaries and benefits, et cetera. But that's what we do. We don't make things, we educate children. And I suspect that there are many families who are taxpayers who want the very best educators for their children. And I, I know we're in a, in a negotiation year, and I understand, of course, there are budgetary constraints. And I also understand that there may be some unforeseen situations operationally, et cetera, but with what we know, I want to put our focus on those people who do the work. It's not just the teachers, it's the custodians, it's the counselors, et cetera. You had gone through the, the whole list last night when you spoke with Town Council, and these folks are responsible for supporting students through innovative, research-based programs. So I, I want to assure that any of the folks out there who are concerned that we just try and get as much money as we can and try and spend it as fast as we can, that that is not the case. This is extraordinarily thoughtful, very transparent process, and it really does take into consideration, you know, all of the needs that we are trying to address with, with every single one of our children, every single one. So I, I support the process. I am a process person. I appreciate that. And I think 4.75 is where you landed. I'm not sure if there's anything to cut or move around in that area, so I'm, I'm all for it, Doug. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Can I just point out one more thing? I just want to say it was really rewarding to be on the Finance Subcommittee this year. I really, I really learned a lot, so I want to commend you when, you know, I learned in the Subcommittee, when you told us in those meetings that you kind of went to, you know, each department and each school, and you asked them, what could they cut or what could they reform in order to get their priorities into the budget? And, you know, I thought that that was really innovative and considerate of these folks, because I think, you know, they know their budget more than anyone, because they're on the front lines, and I, I just want to say, great job with that. That was a great idea.
Yes, Amy?
Thank you. I prepared a few things that I wanted to say. I do happily support this budget as well. This budget represents a big part of why I actually ran for school committee last year, and I believe that there was an issue to be addressed with our out-of-district placements for two reasons. The first reason is, you know, that we can educate many of these students in district by hiring qualified and experienced teachers. And secondly, this type of investment will ultimately save the district a great deal of money, which this budget does reflect on page 37. And I do think that this cost-savings approach of increasing services in district will help improve and expand programs for language-based needs, social-emotional needs, and behavioral needs. This will also help prevent future, hopefully, out-of-district placements from happening and improve our overall special education population in Wakefield. And I am also really pleased to see that the work we did with our new Student Services Subcommittee provided really important data and information to help with these budget priorities this year. So I think we did some good work in that Subcommittee. And though I am mindful that this in-district approach takes time and money, I do believe that this budget represents a great step in the right direction for Wakefield.
Thanks, Don. Great, great comments from my, from my colleagues, and I echo all of them. So I chaired the Finance Facilities Subcommittee this year, and I too got to see the sausage made and work with Doug and Mike and RJ and Ann very closely along the way. And I also want to make sure I acknowledge the input and help that we got in developing the budget from our Finance Committee liaisons, liaison and liaison group. That group was extremely helpful in both posing challenging questions to us about the budget and recommending steps along the way that both, I think, helped us frame the work and think about it more clearly, and, and ways to also convey our priorities to the, to the community. So just, just to back up, just for the community's sake, we didn't, we didn't state the number, so we're just shy of $42 million this, for our proposed budget for FY '20, which represents a four, overall 4.75% increase. As Tom, you and Doug and Mike presented to the Town Council last night and included as part of that presentation a 20-year snapshot, or a 20-year picture of school funding, and that 20-year picture actually showed that...
It's 22.
22, so...
No, no, page 22.
Page 22, oh, thank you.
We just happened to know that page. I don't know why, but you do.
Right, right. So, so, and so the reason, the reason we wanted to include that was because it, it represents a kind of a larger arc of school spending, of our investment in the public schools in Wakefield. And what it shows is, over that 20-year average, our annual increases were about 3.2%, average 3.2%. So what does that mean? That means that we're, we're roughly, our investments in public education are roughly on pace with the growth of the community, I think. I think that's fair. And remember that during that time, I think, as you, as you emphasized last night to the Town Council and the Town Administrator, that time came with increasing demands on our, on our educators, higher standards for our students, more mandates from the federal and state governments, so a growth, a significant growth on the challenges that our, our teachers and our students face. And so I think the long-term arc of public spending on education in Wakefield is one of consistent fiscal responsibility. At the same time, we recognize that over the last several years, we have gotten significant support from the town, and we know that, and I think I can speak for all of us to say that we're deeply grateful for that, both at the, at the level of elected leadership and appointed leadership in the town, and of course, from town meeting and the taxpayers at large. And so, you know, I think it's important that we put this budget, our 4.75% growth from FY '19 to FY '20, in that larger context, because I think it demonstrates that, you know, we're mindful that, that the investments that we're making have to be responsible and responsive to the, to the needs of the community. So as I say, this will be the last budget that I vote on as a school committee member, and as I've said in the past, the two things that I always, the two measuring sticks that I use for the budget was the process, did the process have integrity? And is the budget a good reflection of our strategic priorities, and in this case, our instructional strategy? And I think in both cases, and Ann, you spoke to this, and RJ as well, the process that we've developed as a school community and that Doug and his leadership team have developed is really, really strong process. is a really, really strong process that starts at the, at the, at the, at the, sort of the grassroots, if you will, at the school level, comes up and develops that input with Doug and his leadership team, takes those, takes those needs of each school and the larger district and channels them into a larger strategic conversation about what we can afford and what should be our priorities and what priorities align with our instructional strategy. And then we take that to the public, and we take that to our partners and town government, and, and we have a public hearing, and we have input from, from stakeholders, from the community. And I think this process really, really has a lot of integrity, and I think it's worked for the community. And then again, do our spending priorities align with our instructional strategy? And in this case, in FY twenty, I look at two pieces of our instructional strategy. One, of course, is our, our teachers, our educators, high-quality instruction. So, what does that mean? It means we put aside money to, to negotiate good contracts with our teachers and our administrators and our other professionals that attract and develop and retain the most talented staff that we can have to serve our students in a highly competitive environment, in which, you know, we're, we're the highest-achieving state in, in, in the nation. Educators want to live here, they want to work here, but they can go to many places. And to get and retain especially the best teaching staff, we need to, we need to compensate them, and we need to help them develop as professionals. So, that's, as Ann mentioned, that's a big part of our budget. And then the other, in terms of the new positions, with one exception, all of those new positions are at the student level, they're working with students, and these are important service, you know, specialists and teachers, working directly with students. And I think Doug and his team have made a really, really strong case for them. The one exception, of course, is the technology support staff. And as we know, with the explosion of technology in our district over the last several years, we need that help as well. So, I think for all those reasons, I'm really supportive of this budget. Again, I think it has integrity in terms of the process through which it was developed, and it has integrity in terms of its alignment with our strategic priorities and our instructional plan. And finally, in response to what I thought was a terrific conversation last night with the town council and the town administrator, I think there is, there is growing acknowledgement that there is a direct relationship between the investments we make in public education and the economic well-being of this community. I think there is, I think there's growing evidence of a virtuous circle under which investments in schools are drawing new families and new growth, which adds to our tax base and in turn produces the revenue that we are going to need to continue to invest in our schools. Does that mean we shouldn't look critically at every expenditure? No, we should. But, but I think there's a growing understanding among our elected leadership and the, and the public at large, that these investments are going to pay off, and, and I think this budget is another step in that direction. Thanks.
Other, any other comments at this time? Questions for the superintendent? So, I would like to add my thoughts. And I guess first, as we've said, for the efficiency of redundancy, that I really agree with everything that's been said around the table, and appreciate the work of the Finance and Facility Subcommittee. Having sat on that committee in the past, I know that it's an awful lot of work, an awful lot of meetings, crazy hours of the day sometimes, and, but it's critically important work in, in aligning the resources that we have with the priorities that we, that we want to represent and the values that we have as a community. I also want to obviously thank the superintendent and the business administrator and the team there for, for leading a very thoughtful process that I think only continues to get better. The transparency of this budget and this budget process has probably been a good four, five, six years now, but I think it's evolved, it's gotten better and crisper each of those years, and that's, that's only more positive. I guess I'd also like to add in the thanks to the town officials, both Mr. Mayo and his staff, as well as the Finance Committee and the liaisons, and I know worked very closely with, with Doug and with the Finance and Facility Subcommittee in attending those meetings often at the interesting hours of the day or night, right? So, I am certainly prepared to be supportive of the, of, of this budget. But I would like to, I would like to add something for the committee's consideration and thinking and to, and to ponder a bit. Through my experience, as well as what I've heard and come to learn in the past year, as well as what I think we all know have been some concerns that haven't been addressed for a couple of years now, particularly in the area of, of special needs, I would like us to consider an, an adjustment or an amendment at this time to be able to address some of those needs. I have a proposal that I'd like to share around the table, if I, if I may, and be able to speak to that as well. This proposal focuses around things that the administration has requested and spoke of, that were left on the cutting room floor at least for two years now. It speaks to needs that we have heard in the parent and teacher survey results that the superintendent shared with us. We've heard it from the results and of reports that, Subcommittee reports coming out of Student Services and the survey that, that you folks did, as well frankly, for two public hearings in a row now, this year and last. And I would like to propose that we address a moderate special need at the Galvin and at Greenwood by adding two point five positions, thereby making effectively the existing positions whole at both of those schools. And also ask the superintendent to put some considerable focus on reorganizing a psychologist and counseling schedules to address the needs that we've heard so much about at the Walton. There was, I don't believe at this time we probably need a price tag for that, I think that some creativity, and certainly the superintendent knows this, I'm not a, a surprise kind of team member here. But I think, I think with input that Doug has shared with me, that there's probably some ability to reorganize a bit without a price tag to be able to meet, or work anyways, to try to meet the needs of the, the students at the, at the, at the Walton. So, the motion that I'm, I'm having, that is before you, is a dollar value of sixty-two thousand, six oh five. It is a point one six percent increase, bringing the total ask in this year's budget to four point nine one percent. I fear that, I feel that sixty-two thousand is a very modest increase to be able to address needs that we have heard and we know exist for a couple of years now. I know that the superintendent is, is really worked very hard with his team to be able to come in and be able to make difficult priorities and difficult choices, and that's something that we all need to do. I have nothing but support for the work that he had done, so please do not misinterpret my suggestion that we, that we, we as a committee react to things that we've heard in this community and things that we know to be the case, and try to react in this way. I feel this is modest, but yet consistent with being able to provide additional supports to our language-based program at, at Greenwood. And then, once those students, obviously, then transition to the Galvin in following years, they have some consistency there as well. Anyways, I would, I would ask, as, as the chair, and I know I've stepped out of the chair for a moment, while that's, I don't know how that happens mechanically, but I would ask if a member were so inclined, if anyone would make this motion. Well, I would like someone to make it, I really don't want to make it as chair.
Yeah, I can, I can do it, just to get us started. So, move that, the school committee, oh, excuse, okay, yeah, move that the school committee increased the FY twenty school budget by sixty-two thousand, six hundred and five dollars in order to support demonstrated critical need in providing additional special education staffing in the form of one point five full-time equivalent at the Galvin Middle School and one point five full-time equivalent at the Greenwood Elementary School, and that the superintendent worked to reorganize school psychologist slash counseling staff schedules to accommodate the counseling needs at the Walton Elementary School. This budget increase represents an additional point one six percent in funding, bringing the total FY twenty request up from four point seven five percent to four point nine one percent, four point nine one percent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Members?
So, just for Greenwood, I'm noticing that right now there's a point five special education teacher there on page forty, forty-three. So, this new request would increase that to a one point oh?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
If I can interrupt?
No, please.
The point five at the bottom was not included in the budget. That was the margin.
So, what exists now at the Greenwood?
A point five.
A point five, okay. And then it will-
Currently at the, currently at the Galvin, there is-
Greenwood.
I'm sorry, Greenwood, I'm looking right now. Special education salaries of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so it's probably a one point five there at the moment.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's what I believe to be the case, and this would then make that point five whole.
A one point oh.
Okay.
That's back on page forty, forty-two.
For a total of two point oh, right now it's one point five staffing, this would increase for the language base.
And then, for the Galvin, could you do the same?
That's going to be a bigger number to do the math on, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand is pretty easy to figure, that's a one point five.
But, but without the math, I can tell you that, yes, that there is a point five that exists, we would add to that point five and make that also a one point oh.
Okay, in addition to the one point oh that's already in the budget request.
Correct.
And that, that is, that is the intention of this motion, recommendation.
And then scheduling things for the Walton, because currently there's a point five at the Walton for-
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. There's a point five school psychologist there, and, and just kind of thinking this through with the team and, and also talking with the principal, we think we can schedule more effectively so that there's kind of continuity day-to-day and not gaps horizontally. They may not be there for the entire day, but in regard to having someone there every day.
Right.
We think that's a priority, and we think through scheduling, we can do that. So, and, and one of the things that I would like to do is, is to try to keep that as a priority, and maybe report back to the school committee in September, you know, early in September, second week, third week of school, just to kind of keep track of, you know, what that's looking like, what the needs of students are also looking like, so it doesn't fall by the wayside.
That's a great idea.
Don?
Yes, Greg.
Thanks. So, to Doug's point, we had a Finance and Facility Subcommittee meeting yesterday morning, and I, I really wanted to schedule that, just so we could give one more opportunity for our committee members to ask questions and make, you know, or suggest changes or additions, deletions to the budget before tonight's meeting, and especially to react to the, the public hearing. And we talked about the, the Walton situation that Ms. Lehman had identified at the last meeting, and that was what I, you know, was focused on, as well as asking questions that, in response to the letter that we got from the WEA on, on the music piece. So, so those were the two, you know, the, the two issues or requests, if you will, that emerged during the budget process from the public, through our public process, if you will, or at least the, the later stage of the public process, which sort of brings me back to, and I was satisfied, I certainly felt satisfied with Doug's plan vis-a-vis the Walton, which sort of brings me back to, you know, as I, I feel that as the Finance and Facility Subcommittee Chair, that, and again, kind of reinforcing the things I was talking about earlier about the integrity of the process, I feel compelled to, to stand behind the four point seven five percent increase that, that we developed as, as a group and that we recommended and that, that we worked on and, and, you know, we haven't made a formal presentation to the Finance Committee yet, but that's the, I think the expectation, that's the number we're going to propose, so, and, and you're right, what you're proposing is a modest increase, and these are needs, these are identified, important, legitimate needs, but, but I think, from my perspective, I, I, at this stage of the game, I don't feel like I can support the amendment.
I certainly appreciate the integrity of the process. Over the years, I have been a helper to, contributor to creating such a process, and I appreciate what you're, what you're saying. There is, I would also say, however, there's no magic to four point seven five.
Sure.
I think it's well within a reasonableness. I think that this conversation tonight, or at any point in the last month, is part of the process. This is not outside the bounds of, of, of the appropriate process that we do as a public body. It is, are deliberative and, and appropriately so. So, I certainly respect, respect what you're saying, but I feel that very strongly that these two needs can be addressed this year, we've gone two years without addressing them, and they can be addressed for a very modest amount of dollars and some creative action on the administration's behalf. And, and I feel that that, in all due respect, is a greater priority than the magic around four point seven five, for which frankly, there is no magic around four point seven five. Yes, Colleen?
First, I wanted to just speak to the, the third point, and I absolutely agree that having that stated and just talking about it is an absolute necessity, just a creative way to approach addressing the needs, and I, I feel like it might impact more than just the Walton School. It's sort of a creative approach that can happen in any district, or in any of the schools that we're seeing some pockets that aren't being filled with, without attaching, you know, a value to it, monetary value to it. For the first two, I have a question, you know, sort of a broader question, and how, this is really for you, Doug, how adding a point five and making those both one point oh positions at the Greenwood and then the Galvin, and I can kind of see the, the continuity there, where we have our language-based program at the Galvin, at the Greenwood, and then that would follow through at the, the Galvin, having that sort of solid support there, and I'm sure it could be even more solid. But also, how does that speak to our, our goal to continue to keep more students in district? You know, the more that we are putting into this program and seeing the, the emergent needs in, in elementary, and then following through at the Galvin, and how it impacts, you know, the total curriculum that the students are accessing, can we see sort of long-term, you know, that we're, we're actually going to be saving some more money in terms of out-of-district placements?
Yeah, you know, without, kind of, you know, it's hard to forecast out-of-district placements a year or two years out, but I, you know, I think Amy hit the nail on the head in regard to supporting students with language-based needs-
Right.
-and doing it with continuity from K-four up into the Galvin and through the Galvin. I think this is a real priority for us. And so, you know, this is, these two point five positions would make two halftime people, which we know that halftime people, and one of the things that we heard loud and clear is that having a halftime person when students have needs, and when they have needs that are specified on an IEP, on a service grid, you know, there's very little wiggle room. And when, you know, we have a student move in, which we've just, we've had actually one student in, and we're anticipating that another one's moving in to the language-based program at Greenwood, so we know that this is, there's going to be a gap there, and we know that we need to provide support, which is, I think, at the heart of Tom creating this motion.
Right.
And I think the same thing exists at Galvin, we spoke a little bit about this, just in regard to trying to serve our language-based population with continuity in regard to how they're served at elementary- And I think the same thing exists at Galvin, we spoke a little bit about this, just in regard to trying to serve our language-based population with continuity in regard to how they're served at elementary in a program, we want to try to continue that at the middle school. We're committed to inclusion, but there, you know, inclusion has its limitations, you know, and so it's, you know, what happens when a student can't be included, and they need academic support, and often our children with language-based needs are really remarkably included, remarkably high-functioning, they just need support in reading and writing, right, to access the curriculum, to participate at a really high level. So, the students often do well in math, and they often do well in humanities as well, but that's with support, so, you know, having, at, at Galvin, for example, we have a one point five right now, and so this would make a two point oh, which would allow us to provide some kind of communication support for, for a cohort of students, that we know, there are a number of kids coming from the middle school, or, excuse me, from the elementary to the middle, which is, and when they transition, we know that that's kind of a particularly vulnerable time, so one of those teachers would support that, the other teacher would support the language-based population that's transitioning to grade five. So, it's, it's hard to answer your question, and to say concretely, you know, you know, we're keeping five kids in district, and based on the sixty-two thousand dollar investment, I don't think it's quite that linear, do I think it's needed, I do. Do I think, you know, we're gonna need to create support for these students, whether it passes this way or not, I think we are, we will have to kind of look at that, so, that's, that's where we're at.
No, you did, yeah, and I didn't mean to be so broad with my question, but.
No, no, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the question.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay, yes.
I just want to go off what, what Greg was saying, I think it is a valid point by you, Tom, I just prefer this brought up more in advance, so, we can at least talk about it yesterday at our last subcommittee meeting, and, and try to get the public a little bit more involved and have some notice on it. And, you know, from what I remember, you know, Amy Lehman brought it up, this valid point of a psychologist at the Walton, where they don't currently have one, is that right?
They have a point five.
They have a point five, okay. So, yeah, I mean, I would be open to, you know, even a, a, a point oh-five at Walton, who could share some time at Galvin and Greenwood if necessary, but, you know, we spoke about addressing this, this concern yesterday, and we seem to maybe have an idea that could fix the problem, you know, with some scheduling changes, so, I don't know if that's this year or next year, but I would, I would support a point, you know, point five equalling point oh-eight percent increase total. I just don't know about the full point one-six.
So, I, I think just to, if I, if I heard what you said correctly, so, in terms of using or scheduling a person more creatively, if we were to allocate a point five for Walton, for example, right? What, what that, I hear you, and it's, it's really a great notion, the difficulty is that the, what the Walton, and what Amy Lehman was advocating for as a point-five school psychologist, and what I think the motion is, is seeking, is a moderate special needs teacher, so it's, it's kind of apples and oranges, so we couldn't take that person and have them overlap, right? In an ideal world, it would be fantastic, if only, right?
Right.
But, so I think that there's some difference there, but I hear you, and I think, you know, I'm gonna talk a little bit about Amy's presentation when I kind of share my remarks, but her presentation was spot-on, it was practiced, it was one of the very best, most comprehensive presentations I think we've heard all year from a parent. Her data was spot-on, her ask, she knew what other schools had, and so, and, and in regard to, and I think that the real critical part of what she was sharing is, there's, there's gaps, right, there's gaps in time, right? And so it's not just personnel, it's really the schedule, right? And so one of the things that, that we came up with in regard to our team, is can we just try to address that first through scheduling, and trying to create some continuity day to day, at, with a net-neutral kind of budget move, and then we'll see what comes there, and like I said, we would track that, track the needs of students, track the, kind of the visits that, that the counselor's getting, and report back in September to say this is where we're at.
So, I apologize, so you said, so what we were talking about yesterday was actually a Walton special education council in need, or?
So. School psychologist.
So.
School psychologist, and this is psychologist as well, is that right?
No, this is a moderate special needs teacher.
This is a special education.
For language-based programs.
Oh, I apologize, okay. I see, okay, okay.
So.
Chris.
So. While I, I guess I do realize that, you know, in the scope of a, a budget that exceeds forty million dollars, sixty-two thousand is, doesn't represent a, a big chunk of money. I, I still, you know, to, to have this come up like just tonight, and I realize we could have a change on town meeting floor.
Right.
You know, things happen, but I, I'm, I guess I, you know, we, we, we had adopted this, this, this budget, whether there's a magic to this four-seven-five or not, this is the number we've, we've talked about, and, and a, a change tonight, as, after all the, my questions had been settled, and I, I really had settled in on what we had, and I was comfortable with what we had, I'm, I'm not really feeling like I'm willing to adopt an amendment at this time. I'm gonna stay with what we, we put forward the first time.
And that's perfectly fine, but we have not adopted this budget.
Technicalities, I understand.
Well, no, it's not a technicality, the school committee has not voted on this budget, Miss County.
I, I don't disagree, but this is, this is the.
That does matter, there is a difference.
This is the budget that's been out in the public?
Yes.
Okay, and a, a, a last-minute change at the table on the night of the vote, is, is just not something uncomfortable with?
Well, that's certainly a point, but it is also not outside the bounds of appropriateness within the process.
I, I agree.
The budget was presented a month ago, we had a public hearing two weeks ago, tonight is the exact time for members around this table to present such commentary. No, am I wrong? I mean.
You can present it, you're entitled, you're certainly entitled to your opinion.
Yes.
And I don't disagree with that, but I, I don't agree with the opinion either, I'm gonna.
Well, and that's okay too.
Okay, so.
I'm just saying this is not outside of the bounds of the process.
I didn't say it was outside the bounds of the process.
Well, you said by hearing it for the first time tonight.
It makes me uncomfortable.
Fair enough. This is the process, though.
Okay.
Because if it's not the process, then we didn't own anything, we might as well rub a stamp what we saw a month ago, and then public hearings, and then, then public commentary is not valuable, and surveys aren't valuable. This is the process.
Okay.
Yes, Amy.
I would just like to also add, you know, last year, I actually spoke at the public budget hearing meeting, and Kim did allocate some money into the intervention line, and I think it's really important to note that, that money that was placed into that intervention line was used at three different schools, Greenwood, Galvin, and I'm not sure of the third, and I've heard some really positive feedback from parents that I never thought would have anything good to say, to be quite honest with you, about their IEPs and the services their kids were receiving, and it was, they're really happy, and I'm really surprised, happily surprised. And I just think, like I said earlier, it's a step in the right direction, and, you know, I feel like for Tom to suggest that we need, you know, to increase this budget by sixty-two thousand, you know, I feel like we need to, you know, increase it by two hundred thousand dollars, because there are so many more services that our children need, and I feel like the more people we place that interact with our students, who are qualified and experienced, in the long run, you know, this really makes the most sense, you know, from an educational standpoint, by preventing out-of-district placements happening, and/or, more importantly, you know, seeing children fail. Because we all know what that leads to, it leads to children who feel anxious and depressed, and there's social-emotional issues, and all of those things just grow with those children, and it just gets worse, and I feel like, at the end of the day, these are services that have not been put in place in past years, and it's time for these things to happen, and, and I appreciate your amendment to this, and I fully support it, Tom.
Kim.
I think, Amy, I think the money was already there, I think Kim, I, I could be wrong, I think Kim just said, let's use it for this, because it was sort of an open thing, so I don't remember there being additional money.
Well, she just placed it into that intervention line, was my understanding, but again, I wasn't involved.
So, yeah, so there was like seventy thousand for the intervention line, she said, let's use it for, you know, this specific service, but I, I guess. I understand the process of the budget and the budget development, what I really respect, though, is Doug's work with his building principles, and having them sort of decide what the priorities are, and I, I can't imagine they would say no to anything, but I, I feel, I feel so strongly about that process. And I respect what, what they, when their feet's to the fire, their feet's, their feet to, are, is to the fi, you know what I mean?
Their foots.
Foots. Their foots are to the fire, they need to make decisions, and they made them, and, so it's, it's more of a, it's more of a process piece for me, I think. And, and, and sort of working through the, 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 the time that Doug, or, or, or sort of respecting, I guess, the time that Doug spent working with his, his folks in the, in the schools, so. I think, you know, my, I, I think I'm, I'm not going to be able to support this based on that principle, based on what I, what I think was a, a sort of clear, transparent process, despite acknowledging the need, which I, I do. So, that's what I have.
I'm disappointed, of course, and I certainly appreciate, appreciate the process and the work, and certainly it's no, in any way disrespect to either the process or those that were so strongly participating in it. I also believe that part of our responsibility as elected officials is to have exactly this conversation, and, and not to just take, to be able to take what we've heard over the years, and this is the second year in a row, that we've heard through surveys, through the administration, and through public comments, that two public hearings in a row, we've heard about the need for this support at the Galvin. So, it isn't, I, while I may be bringing it to the table this evening, it's certainly not new around the table, it's not a new need, it's not, it's not a new, you know, focus for, for, for our kids. So certainly there's no disrespect at all, and I, I, I don't think you are saying that to, to doggo all the process, but I believe this is also our responsibility to, to have exactly this conversation as elected officials, and to, from time to time, reset the table for the administration on what we believe are priorities, that we may hear from the community, or the community impacts us with. The superintendent is charged with making difficult decisions, and frankly, so are we. I would be much more inclined to be exactly where, where you are in, if I were proposing a point one-six percent cut to the superintendent's budget, which is also open for consideration at any time around the table or around the community. That, to me, would undermine the good work, not, and I'm seeking to compliment the good work, not to, not to roll it back, but move it forward. So, and I think, again, it's a fairly moderate ask to meet a fairly large, fairly large need. Other, other discussions, other points? Seeing none, this is amendment, the amendment has been made and seconded and discussed, all in favor? All opposed? The ma, the motion fails. We're back to the main motion. Any further discussion about the budget for FY twenty? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Very good. Okay, item number eight, Chair's general comments, we're gonna push past that, eight B is the appointment of a school committee member to the town's environmental sustainability committee. This is something that we talked about last meeting, and I put out a little tweak reminder earlier today, I know there was a rush at my door in the last couple of weeks. But, is there anyone who would be willing and interested, this is certainly, as the, as the town has created this committee, and they put together a very nice memo on it, which I've shared with you, is certainly gonna be doing some important work, anyone who would like to volunteer for that task?
I'm volunteering, I have a question.
Oh, a question, your hand went up, but I was very excited about that. Yes, a question, Mr. Cowan, Anne.
I guess what, did they share with you any clue as to, like, the time commitment, and the frequency of meetings, and anything like that?
They did not.
I don't see that in this.
They did not.
I think that's probably why there's a reluctance of anybody to volunteer, because we don't know what we're vol, what, exactly what we're signing up for. It could be three times a week, it could be twice a year, I, I don't know.
Well, from, from following what I've read in the paper, which can only be that, so this is certainly my, you know, twice interpretation, I guess, which may or may not be, be, you know, accurate, but I would consider this, their, their work to be pretty vibrant and robust, especially at the beginning of the process, so I'd imagine it's gonna be a busy committee, would be my speculation.
Therein lies my concern.
Here, here, yes, Anne.
So, one of the wonders I have is why school committee member versus? Well, it could be an appointee, it could be, say, our facilities person, because if, if, if it's a sustainability with respect to sort of resources, physical resources, recycling, that sort of thing, it seems like that person would have a lot more understanding than I would, you know, as a school committee member. So. So anyway, I, that's what I was sort of wondering about.
Well, what I believe they are seeking are policymakers.
Okay.
They are, they are seeking elected officials, one from the town council, one from the municipal gas and light board, elected commissioners, and a member of the school committee. They are also seeking members of the DPW staff, facility staff, and then four members of the public. So I think they're seeking a well-rounded group of people around town, both staff professionals, as well as community members to volunteer, and they're seeking policymakers, elected policymakers, one from each of the, of the, you know, the, the three boards.
All right, I'll do it.
You like the policymaker part?
Okay, I'll make that motion right now.
Before she forgets, hurry up, Chris, let's go, motion, Mr. Cowan.
School committee approved the appointment of Anne Forty-Eight, Anne Marie Forty-Eight, the Marie was coming out, so, to the town's environmental sustainability committee as presented.
Second.
Second, Anne, do you accept?
Yes, I do, I accept.
All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously, great. Thank you, Anne, thank you very much.
I'm taking one for the team.
You are indeed. We'll buy you an ice cream.
Buy me an ice cream.
Buy you an ice cream after the.
Buy me a recycled bag.
A recycled bag, yes, right, get you a paper bag from Shaw's. Okay.
Thanks, man.
Discussion and, and planning with regard to Thursday night in the SOI, I know we've talked about this quite a bit, I have shared with the members electronically the schedule, that was worked out by the, those that got together, and, and also a copy of the SOI itself, so certainly, any, any questions? So certainly, um, any, any questions or concerns or thoughts, anyone would like to share with regard to the agenda for Thursday, or, um, there will be an opportunity, um, which I also put out in the same email, sort of a survey, about when we can gather next week, uh, for a special election exclusive, uh, to the approving of the SOI. So that, you know, the process being that we've discussed it here a couple of times, we've shared it out, we had a public community forum, uh, we'll meet next week, one, one time when we all land there, um, and then, uh, it goes to town council Monday, the eighth, and is due to MSBA, uh, Friday, the twelfth, or certainly before that. So, if anyone has any comments moving, moving forward, please share them with me before Thursday, other than that, we'll publish that as the agenda. Chris?
My only comment for Thursday is I, I suggest to you, you are very upfront in the first place, that you have a hard stop.
Right.
Because of the next meeting.
Yep, yep. Yep, excellent.
Nobody feels like you're shutting them off.
Right.
You announce it upfront that we have to end, then...
Yeah, well, even I put that actually in the agenda itself, seven to eight-thirty as a, so that's, as opposed to, the beginning of that sort of announcement of a actual end time, so we can make the other town hall commitment.
And just to clarify Chris's point, that, that is because, uh, you and Doug and the team will be presenting to the finance committee.
Right, finance committee.
On Thursday night, which is, as we know, very important, so...
And also at eight-thirty, so...
You're gonna have to teleport there from...
Yeah, well, although they're hearing a variety of budgets, we're second to last. So by the time it gets around, we're gonna be, it's gonna be pretty late in the night anyway.
Peter seems to think we'll be fine.
Yeah, we, we've, we've been down this road before. Eight-thirty is, eight-thirty is early at finance committee, right? Especially, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Fair enough.
I think if we get there at eight-thirty-four, we'll probably still be okay. Okay, great, great, great.
But I thought the, I think the agenda looks great. I think it's gonna be a good conversation.
I just like the idea of teleporting.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Superintendent's reports, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Um, it's been a busy March. Um, after our last school committee meeting on the twelfth, on the fourteenth, we had STEAM night, um, which is our second annual STEAM event, um, and it was remarkably successful. And, and so I think we had probably three hundred-plus people there. Um, I think we need to especially thank, um, Dr. Jennifer Thomas and, and her kind of group of parent volunteers, who were just remarkable. Uh, they just continued just to, you know, exceed expectations year after year, and so we can't thank them enough. Um, on March nineteenth, we had something happen, uh, for the first time this year, but, which represents about a year's worth of preparation. Our district behavioral health coordinator, Andrew Sidroni, along with, um, the, a council leader, Jennifer Hart, at the middle school, um, screened two-hundred-and-twenty-nine eighth graders for the first time. Um, they screened them for kind, kind of their issues around safety, as well as kind of a screener for adolescent depression, which was actually remarkable. And so this was coordinated with the high school counselors, um, and, and this is something that they've been working on for quite some time. It's really a remarkable way for us to not only educate students, um, but also to check in with them, to see how they're thinking, how they're feeling, um, and to make sure things are going well. Um, so we can't thank them enough for their work and their effort in developing those programs, and also executing that and getting it done in such a, such a quick, timely manner. So, so to Andrew and to Jen, thank you very much. Um, on March twentieth, we had a professional day, where all of our instructional leaders in the district, um, got together at Galvin, um, where we kind of studied the art and science of teaching. Um, it's, it's through the Marzano Project or the Marzano Group, and this initiative was led by the Assistant Superintendent, Karen Morrow. Um, we continue to really focus on instructional practices to meet the needs of all kids, and that includes our advanced learners, as well as students, um, that need support. And so I'm pleased at the work and how that's developing there. On March twenty-third was Parent University, this past Saturday. Uh, Catherine Dingra and, and her team, um, along with Karen Fitzpatrick, did an amazing job putting that together. That's our sixth annual Parent University. And in, in, kind of, we also had, just before that, we had our community vigil, as Lily shared as well. So it, it's been a busy, busy March, um, and we can't kind of thank people enough for attending and for supporting the public schools. And so we, it's much appreciated. Um, this Thursday, as Tom said, will be our community forum. This Thursday is also our Galvin showcase, which starts at five-thirty, um, and we encourage people to attend, and I hope to see you there. And so other kind of remarks, um, just really about the budget process, I want to thank the school committee, uh, for your support and feedback. It's really much appreciated. I really can't thank, uh, Michael Pfeifferling enough for creating really a remarkable budget book, um, that's transparent, it highlights our needs, and I think Greg has already covered this, it aligns with our instructional strategy, which is our academic core, which connects to our teachers, our students, and the materials and curriculum that we're using. Um, we, we feel like it's connected to our core values and the values of the community as well. I also, uh, need to thank, um, the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee. I thank your feedback, as well as our FinCom liaison partners. Uh, that continues to be kind of a model, I think, not only in this district, but other districts could learn a lot from it as well. So I can't, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for your support, and especially Michael, thanks, much appreciated. So, um, that's kind of what I have for remarks. Um, next on my list is just to discuss, um, the school calendar, and to get some feedback on that. I don't know if people have questions or thoughts about it. Mr. Cowan has already told me that, um, as long as we update the color coding, um, and make sure everything's coded correctly, he doesn't see any problems right now, but, um, I don't know if anyone else has any other thoughts or questions.
Doug, I, I do, if I may. One of the things that, um, I think actually I volunteered to do this last meeting, I think.
Okay.
Although maybe I just said it anticipating that someone else was gonna do it. I don't know the answer to that, but nonetheless, at the last meeting, there was a, uh, I, it came out of my mouth, so I took responsibility for it, to do some research around the area on the, um, on the religious holidays. So I have, I have done that. I was able to get information from fourteen area communities, and have populated, uh, this sheet, which I'm happy to share around. I know that a substantive part of the conversation, um, really as, as we began last, last meeting, substantive part of this conversation had to do with, with really the inclusion or not of the Good Friday holiday, which, uh, we sort of, uh, you know, said when we were having this conversation a year ago now, we, we kicked the can down the road, because this year, in two thousand and nineteen, it's during April School Vacation Week, but now, of course, um, you know, we are, we need to have that conversation, we need to, to put that, put that matter to rest. We've heard commentary, we've received emails, and we had, uh, remarks this evening about it as well. So I just wanted to share out here, uh, which, what I think I volunteered to do, so, um, just by going to the school websites, we're able to find fourteen communities that are in our area, general area, that, um, have published next year's school calendar. And I put a little, and then there were several communities in the second half of the page that have not yet published, um, the calendar, or at least not published it online, so I couldn't, couldn't find that. And then in the box down the bottom, I sort of summarized, um, the, um, between the fall Jewish holidays and the Good Friday holiday in the spring. We're seeing that sixty-four percent of the fourteen communities, uh, which is nine, have the fall, are in school for the fall Jewish holidays, and therefore, and are also consistently in school for Good Friday. Thirty-six percent of them not having school on the Jewish holidays, nor, and conversely, nor the, uh, Good Friday. So what does that mean? Well, the statistics are here, so I don't want to interpret statistics for anyone, I guess, at the end of the day, it's a fairly mixed bag, but certainly the majority of, um, of, of districts in our surrounding area, sixty-four percent, um, are, are in school, and have fairly, uh, robust, um, school holiday policies, which I think we do as well, and I think maybe one of the things that we need to do is to address some of the questions that are concerns that Mr. Farber raised this evening around implementation and, and attention to it, and, um, and consistency in its application, perhaps, but anyways. So, I've done what I volunteered to do, which was to do some research around, around, around the neighborhoods.
Thanks, Tom.
Around the towns, rather.
Thank you, Tom.
So further discussion? Yes, Colleen?
I also want to thank the Farber family, and hopefully they're watching, maybe from home, um, just to listen to, uh, Mr. Farber, and, um, the children especially, to see how it impacts, you know, sort of their day, and, uh, their most important holidays, as any religion has. And I think that, for me, it, it is looking at all of the religions and all of our students, and, and what they treasure and observe, um, in their different religions and different traditions. And, um, thank you too to Suzie for gathering, um, some of our community members together to put forth, sort of, um, not just, okay, this way or not that way, but it's very important to understand, you know, if we are going to be in school on these holidays, specifically Jewish holidays, because Good Friday is maybe a question mark. I think it absolutely needs to, we need to have a consistent policy that, maybe we have the policy, but it seems like it's interpreted inconsistently. And also, these days be an excused ap, absence for the students that are taking these holidays with their families. I would propose that we remove Good Friday from our calendar, and that we, I'm sorry, not remove it. So that wrong. Good Friday's just gone. I would propose that we are in school on Good Friday, and really just, that speaks to recognizing all of our students, our traditions, our families, and, um, the religions, not only of our Jewish students, but also, like I said, many other students' religions, and I feel like we are only getting more diverse as a community and as a school community. And I think that we work hard to look at each individualized, you know, student, you know, and, and what they need for support, and whether they need support in learning, but also in sort of their life practices. And I just feel like, without observing how, you know, if you observe multiple religions' holidays, of course, we get into a large number, right? But I believe that, that taking Good Friday off the table as a no-school day, it, it at least sends the message that we, you know, support every student's religion, and staff as well. You know, this is just about the students, it's the staff, and all of the, um, all of these stakeholders that we asked to come to school every day and on, on religious holidays.
Okay. Yeah, Chris?
In principle, I don't disagree with Colleen, because I, I think that we are a public school, and what religion is, and supposed to kind of fall into our domain. The concern I have is where the rules are with participation. Like, at what point would it not be counted as a school day? Uh, what percentage of absence, would we be able to get enough subs for the teachers that took that day off? I, I'm just talking volume, I don't care what holiday it is. It's, it's, like, I know in a lot of communities that have a, a, a larger Jewish population than do a Christian population, they do take, they are for that very reason. I know it's in this list, that it's twenty-eight percent are bo, are in school on both the Good Friday and the Jewish holidays. So it wouldn't be unheard of to be in school for both. But I, I, I'd be interested, before we took it off, that, you know, as a, as a, uh, a day, a no-school day, to have the information about how, like, how would it, what would that, how would that impact us, really? You know, how many students would be out, how many staff would be out, and would we be effectively be able to conduct school that day? Because I, I, I'm not, I don't know that answer, and I, but I think it's a question we have to have the answer to before we could decide that.
Yes, Ann.
So I'd like to address the, the, the calendar issue, and then, uh, talk more about the policy. So, I, I grew up Catholic. I don't remember needing the entire Good Friday to, to observe. I could be wrong, because I, I can't remember. Whereas, you know, our, our Jewish families take the entire day, two full days, uh, and it is the holiest of, of all of their holidays. Um, so I'm not sure, sort of, it would impact, uh, the participation a great deal. Um, I work in a, a public school that, or a district that just moved from having both Jewish holidays and Good Friday to none. And I suspect, you know, they'll, we'll probably still get the participation numbers as needed. It has a very, uh, fairly high percentage of Jewish families, but I think it's probably a, a good question to ask. One of the things that my school district did is provide the teachers, uh, with a list of the sort of major holidays of the, the, of the religions of the area. So, you know, it, I think that helps to kind of gauge, um, participation, um, and how the, the, um, teachers can plan. I'm in support of separating, sort of, church and state, essentially, you know, as you said, and, and so I, I would be in favor of, of, uh, being in school, uh, it, for all religious holidays, with, I guess, the exception of Christmas, because I think that's just part of our culture, um, and our, our, how our school calendars work. But I guess what I really want to speak to is assuming, or not assuming, if we pretended that we are in school, right? Or even if we aren't in school in Good Friday, but we continue to be in school on the Jewish holidays. Um, I'm, I raised two Jewish girls in this school, and when Jenna said, "What if I were your children?" Well, you are, you know, you are, those two girls are my girls. And it, it is a challenge to be a minority in any community. And so my high schoolers have struggled with keeping up, because I think there is total disregard for the Jewish holidays. And it could be that we don't actually have a policy policy in our policy manual, because I, I don't...
We do, actually.
Do we really?
We do, yes.
Total disregard. So much so that my kids have had to make up tests during their ASC, or after school, or it, it's just aggravating. And do they want their mother to contact their teacher and say, "What are you doing to my kids?"
I'm gonna guess, no.
Um, no, they don't.
Yeah, and, yeah.
They're in high school, they can take care of themselves, thank you very much. But it does put them in a really tough position. So I think we need to really follow through with the implementation of that policy, and I'm gonna look, you know, to our high school principal to really lay down the law on that one.
I don't think you need to look to our high school principal, I think, um, we can do that.
Am I looking at the, the guy right here?
Right, right, yes, and, and so I, I don't, if I can chime in?
Please.
And so, you know, I think, first I want to, um, say thank you so much to the Farber girls. They were remarkable, right? And so Jen, I believe, is eleven, grade five, right? Fifth grader, prepared statement, handed it off to her sister, they, they kind of read in tantrum.
Awesome.
When we do a curriculum review, and, for example, questions we got last night from town council about, you know, how do we know our curriculum is working well? Oh my gosh, those two girls, if that's not proof positive, they were nothing shy of remarkable. And so I, I want to say thank you to the... And so I, I wanna say thank you to them and we are so proud of, of you girls and, and I hope, um, thank you to the Farber, Mr. and Mrs. Farber as well. So, but there, this is a kind of a, there's a conflict here, right? And so because we're not just talking about the calendar, we're talking about a, a policy and it needs to be implemented in a way that is sensitive to the needs of students and families. And I think that that is really critical. And I, I wanna thank kind of the community for feedback on this as well, um, because I think that that's exactly what was highlighted, is exactly what you're saying, Anne. Is if we have a policy and, you know, we need to kind of strengthen that policy and do a little bit more work at the district and school levels, we can do that, right? But it doesn't, it doesn't kind of take away the difficulty with the calendar, right? And so, so there's two parts to this. One is whatever, however we feel about the ca, we can talk about the calendar, but we, I, I'm leaving tonight, um, with, with a very clear sense that we need to kind of reconvene our leadership team, um, our building leadership team, our principals and assistant principals just to check in on what the policy is. I also think, you know, in the policy subcommittee, it might be worth a look at some of the samples that were shared and thinking about language that could be included to strengthen our policy. And so it's just a, it's just a question. But, but with that aside, I think Chris Callen raises a very kind of point that can't be missed, which is, you know, if, if our community celebrates, you know, uh, Good Friday at a rate that where if adults are absent and students are absent, um, and it would constitute a day that would interrupt teaching and learning to the point where we couldn't function as a district, it raises the question, should we keep that day? I also understand Colleen's point to equitably represent kind of religious needs of, of all of our families. It seems like the fair thing to do would be to remove Good Friday from the calendar. I think the difficulty there and the conflict there is, um, this is part of the contracts that exist in the district, not the, not the Unit A teachers contract, but in our, some of our other contracts. So it's, it's, it's kind of a very layered, it's very, it's not as simple as saying yes or no. And so, uh, you know, I think this is something we're really gonna need to work through.
I was gonna say, can, is it possible that, um, you know, we, we don't take, well, I don't wanna simplify not voting on the calendar, but getting, getting feedback, um, from our educators and our community. So I also was raised Catholic and, and Good Friday mass was in the evening or in the late afternoon. And I also went to, you know, private Catholic high school until I was in, you know, until I graduated. And still, you know, we did go to mass during school, of course, of course, on Good, you know, but, or we didn't, we didn't have school, but we had mass the day before. But it was always something that we observed later in the day. So, and, and that's all just logistics, right? It doesn't, it doesn't mean that, you know, the focus is not there and we're not respecting it and giving it the respect it deserves for a whole day. But I, I guess I never really understood from sort of my approach of practicing Catholicism, why we did have the day, the entire day. I do understand from other perspective or other religious perspectives, why the entire day is observed because they, and, and, you know, respect to the Jewish holidays, they are in temple all day. So I guess that's one of the issues that I have around it is, and, and I spoke to this, you know, the other night is, I feel like we've just become so used to having the day that it, it is more of attrition and speaking from a parent, you know, that's home with young, you know, has been home with young kids, it's really just another, another day off, you know, whether we go to mass or not, it's shifted towards the end of the day, you know, and it becomes sort of a no school day, but not observed, you know, in our, in our church all day. And I, I, like Anne said, was raised that way and I've never experienced it any differently. No disrespect to practicing Catholics, you know, I just haven't experienced it like that where I feel like the day is necessary. And while I understand it's very difficult to remove it, you know, as a no school day as well, I understand the challenges of that, but I feel like it's, it's like one of these steps that we have to acknowledge and that we have to take in order to progress forward and, and be consistent with, you know, just, just about what our, what our, you know, visitors talked about tonight in a broader sense. But I also acknowledge the difficulty of doing this, especially in negotiating contracts. It's, it's a multi-layered complication.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chris?
Might I suggest that, you know, we clearly, until all these logistical questions are answered, as far as what's in the contracts and, uh, what would happen with, you know, with the day being counted or not, uh, we're not gonna solve that tonight. So, but I think that the calendar for people's planning purposes should be adopted with, and then we can vote at a later date when those questions are answered to change that one day. Does that seem reasonable?
Well, it, it does, although from my two cents, on the negotiating team, um, to be candid, it could be obviously in a public conversation, but nonetheless, uh, I would say that we collectively are looking for guidance from the school committee on how to proceed. It can't come out, it can't be borne that way. It needs to be brought into the conversation that way. That it is not a, um, it is not a holiday in the Unit A contract. It's not a paid day, it's not one of the 184 days that are scheduled. So in far as the teachers go, they would work one more day in April and one less day in June. It's not, doesn't change that dynamic really at all. It is a paid, um, holiday in other, uh, other, other contracts, the 12-month employees by and large. And then really the direction the school committee provides us in negotiating, we would, we would have to deal with that. But to deal with it the other way around, like we, you know, I know now we're having this in a public way, but I think it's important to answer Chris's, Chris's concern that it's not, it shouldn't be that the three subcommittee members and the union agree to have a day off or not. It's the school committee that has to set the calendar. We can't, if we wanna go do a survey, then let's go do more surveys that we pay, we may or may not pay attention to. But at the end of the day, we have to set the calendar and then we bring that to the bargaining table and, and provide the necessary feedback. It, I, I'm not comfortable frankly, as one of the, um, committee members along with, with Greg and Colleen, negotiating anything that doesn't come as a directive from the school committee with regard to the calendar next year. The three of us are not empowered to do that unless the school committee tells us that. So I, I'm kind of looking for that direction, to be, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't know that there's anything that we don't already know, um, other than, other than a potential survey on how many people may or may not consider taking the day. That, that being said, um, and at the risk of throwing my own Catholicism on the table, now that we've all done this, we'll all, you know.
We've all come out.
We've all come out. But to, to Colleen, to Colleen's point, and I guess, um, you know, a Good Friday is not a holy day of obligation in the Catholic Church. We should say that. If we're talking about, if we're talking about the religiosity of these things and, which I don't think we should. But it's, but we're having this conversation. So if we're gonna have this conversation, let's at least put the facts around.
Right.
It is not the same type of holiday as it is in the Jewish faith. That is a high holiday, the fall, uh, Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur are high holiday, as I understand them, in the Jewish faith. While this is, this is a biggie in the Catholic faith, but it's not a holy day of obligation. And all due respect, it, I'm, mass is not celebrated on Good Friday. Those that seek to go are asked to go at three o'clock for the, for the, for the, um, the rosary in the, in the Stations of the Cross.
There are seven services as well.
Yeah.
But it's not a mass, you're right.
So.
It's the one day that there isn't a mass.
No Eucharist.
There's, right, there's no Eucharist, exactly. See, now, see now it's all, now we're all coming out, right? There we go. So, you know, I don't mean to say that tongue in cheek, but I, I do say to add to the, add to the, uh, if we're going to be thoughtful in comparing the, the obligation behind a, uh, one's Jewish faith to attend to participate in those, in the services around those high holidays, we should then at least balance that out with what is the actual church's expectation regarding Catholics and observance of, um, and in fact, the, the Catholic faith, you should participate in your day, um, and, you know, fast. It's not a, I mean, but anyways, now we're getting way off.
I'm sorry, but I think that's the point, Tom.
Yeah.
Is that we're not in a position to, um, sort of dictate what is worthy and what isn't.
Right.
Yes.
And so I.
It's nine, it's 10:915, just, just say it. I apologize, Anne, I was.
It's okay.
It was a softball.
I know, I let it hang out there for you. Um, and so I, I mean, that's my point, really, essentially is, is what you said. And, and so it, you know, to, again, to hearken back to what, um, Colleen said is, is in, in a real way, sort of saying, "We are not taking holidays off from school" is, in my opinion, respectful of any religion that someone has. And I am not, as school committee member, not comfortable making those delineations of what counts and what doesn't. I mean, I think what, what we wanna be, we wanna be aware of is that there has been, you know, this has been historically a day off. The majority culture, I, my, in Wakefield is, um, is likely to be Christian or Catholic. But I also think, you know, in some ways, it's, it's good to be reminded that even though you are in the majority, that doesn't give you the right to sort of dictate certain things either. And, and just to be sort of mindful, right, of, of other people's belief systems that could be vastly different from yours. And, um, so I'm in favor of just taking a vote tonight and just kinda, you know, kinda to the, the, the calendar, well, what is, whatever the motion is, the motion is.
To take the calendar as, as presented.
Okay. As presented, which includes Good Friday.
Includes it as a day off.
As a day off. We don't wanna get rid of Good Friday, but we just.
Of course, oh yes, great.
So can I make a suggestion? So it sounds to me like Colleen is proposing an amendment?
I am proposing an amendment to that Good Friday is an in-school day.
Right, right. So if we can make that, we should, we should make that in the form of a motion, right?
Doesn't need to be in writing?
It doesn't need to be in writing.
This is not sound needed.
But it does need to be, it does need to be, um, you know, proposed as an amendment. So I, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's my amendment. The other, the policy discussion is, we've discussed that and that doesn't need to be, okay.
Right.
Yep.
Although we could certainly, you know, highlight the expectation around reaffirming that there is a school district, school committee policy that's been around, whatever the date is, it's not new.
I can summarize it. I think it's important, yeah. This is, the policy 906R of the Wakefield School Committee, it's accommodations for religious and ethnic observances. And this, you know, goes to some of the things that our students and, um, the family that testified tonight. So the Wakefield School District serves children from many different religious and ethnic backgrounds. Since the American tradition requires respect for religious diversity and upholds freedom of religion and equality before the law, um, this is our policy. So it prohibits discrimination against any student, employee, or other individual because of such individual's religious, ethnic belief or practice inconsistent with Massachusetts law. Students absent from school because of religious or ethnic holiday may not be deprived of any awards or eligibility. Students whose conscientious observance of religious or ethnic holiday conflicts with participating in a school, participating in a school-scheduled event such as tryouts, et cetera, will not be required to participate nor penalized for their nonparticipation. Any absence because of religious or ethnic holiday must be recorded in the school register and any group, uh, or class attendance recorded as an excused absence for religious observance. Such absence must not be recorded on any transcript or application or employment form. And to be entitled to the privileges set forth above, the pupil must present to the principal a written excuse signed by a parent or person standing in place of a parent at least 24 hours in advance. So in a nutshell, this gives an opportunity for students of all faiths to, um, assert, you know, their, um, their faith and, and be absent from school for legitimate, uh, religious observance. And so, um, but, you know, uh, we heard tonight and understand that it's not, this policy isn't implemented, um, consistently across the board and that's something that I think we all agree, uh, needs to be addressed.
But, but is there enough in there that would sort of help a, a teacher or a principal sort of see that, hey, you really can't give a test, not just that day, but probably the day after, right? You know, or, or something to that effect? Or is that more of a procedural type thing?
There's pretty clear guidelines around, you know, when Rosh Hashanah starts at sundown and sun, when it, when it ends at sunup, you know, and the same with Yom Kippur.
Yeah.
Right? And so, um, so I think it's very clear, we, we provide very clear start and end times, right? No homework or test should be given during these periods of time.
Yeah.
And so, uh.
But, you know, with this, I guess, just going back to Anne's point, Anne used the term minority, right? You know, what this doesn't address, which is the reality, is that our calendar is built around the Christian, um, religion.
Right.
Right? No one is asked to go to school on Easter. No one is asked to go to school on Christmas. No, no, it's a Sunday, right? That's my point. You know, and, and Jewish students are, you know, and so this is what we're struggling with, you know, among other things, so.
I guess, when this policy was, was adopted, the idea was, I mean, yes, Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur are important, but there are other holidays as well. It doesn't stop there.
Right, right.
And, and this was intended to.
Not just in the Jewish faith, yeah, yeah.
Encompass any religion.
Right, right.
So it's, it's not specifically name any holiday.
Right.
It just says religious holidays, period.
Right, right.
And that's why, and, and, and in the case of the Jewish holidays, they start at sunset and go to sunset and that's, that's the holiday. So that's, well, that's the time that's recognized. So it, it's really, that's an implement, implementation process problem.
Right.
If Colleen wants to make her amendment, then that's a different thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I, if I could add to this, uh, in my, in my research around the, um, school districts in our area, um, I came across two school districts in particular, Arlington and Belmont, that had a, um, very interesting statement that I would like the committee's indulgence to read, 'cause I didn't make copies. But I, I tracked the statement back to a recommendation from the Anti-Defamation League. And the Anti-Defamation League makes a recommend, a recommended status, uh, recommendation for school districts who are so inclined to adopt the following statement. This is from Belmont, but it says, Arlington has the exact same statement. "The Belmont Public Schools is a culturally and religiously diverse community. While the schools are not closed for observance of any religious holidays, it is the intention of the district to respect the religious and cultural days that are significant to the students, families, and staff of our town. The following list includes many of these holidays celebrated during the 2019, 2020 school year that may require a student to be absent from school." That list, as an aside, here, as you see, has about 25 or 30 holidays. It lists the name of the holiday, the faith, and the date in that, that calendar. And I'm sure we can rely on the Anti-Defamation League to have such dates correct, right? Uh, the statement goes on, "Students who miss homework, excuse me, students who miss schoolwork because of an excused absence, including absence for religious observation, shall not be expected to complete homework, study for tests, or do other schoolwork during their absence. They shall be given the opportunity to complete assignments and tests within a reasonable time based on the circumstances upon their return. These absences should be managed in the same manner as absences for other excused reasons, including informing the school of the absence, talking with teachers about the..." the school of the absence, talking with teachers about the absence, and any missed work. Please contact Belmont Public Schools with information about a religious day that may affect your family that is not listed below for inclusion in future lists." I found that to be a very nice statement, which, you know, we're obviously at, at liberty to review at another time. But what Belmont and Arlington do is they include this statement above and this piece of paper right with the calendar. It's definitely the.
But they ended up in opposite directions.
Yeah.
Arlington's got no school on both.
Right.
And Belmont's in school for both.
Yep.
So their, their interpretations are opposite.
But in both cases, they've, they've done it equitably.
Correct.
At least, they, I think that was the intention.
Correct, right. In both cases, they're, they're consistent, whether they're in school or out of school.
Right.
And they're not penalizing any student or staff member.
Right.
Who chooses to observe in his or her way.
Right.
Anyway, I found that to be quite interesting, that as I did web searches, lead you places, and, and it seemed like a decent place to go, the Anti-Defamation League. Yes, RJ?
Just looking at the, the data and the numbers, I would say that if, you know, if the Wakefield community is, say, over 50% Catholic, you know, and, and I'm not trying to downplay anything at all, but, you know, if, if the Jewish community in Wakefield, if we give these two days off, we do have to wonder, going off of Chris's point, will the other minority religions want their religious holidays off as well? So we, at this point, I'm kind of unsure about that. But I do think it's obvious that we need to enforce, you know, no homework, no tests, excused absences, whether that's by, you know, P A announcement at each school, or flyers in the school, or both. It's, you know, an idea.
Great.
How about this? How about we delay a vote tonight, come back in two weeks with a, an amended school calendar, with removing Good Friday from a holiday as a proposal, and incorporating some version of that language into an amended policy? Because I, I agree, I think that, that gets much more, in much more detail and clarity around some of this. I get the sense that if we did that and put that all together in a package with a vote, that we'd have support for that in two weeks, but just an idea.
I don't think we'd get the answers to the impact questions that fast.
I, my opinion is we're not going to get those answers. I think it'd be impossible, frankly, to get, even a survey probably isn't going to give us the data we need to make, you know. I'm, I'm not sure, but I, I don't have a lot of confidence in that.
Well, I think one idea would be Doug could put a question out on the M I S S.
Oh, sure. Yeah, 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 sort of a broader.
For those of you who have school on Good Friday, how does it impact your district?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you, maybe it's budgets, and you won't get any answers, I don't know.
I think it's a neat question. And I, and I think at negotiations, you know, I think that, that they had talked about talking to the unit members to see.
Yes.
To get feedback from them as well. So that might be a data point that, that's worth sharing. And so, but I do think, at the end of the day, I, I agree with Tom, we do need to make a decision.
Yeah.
I don't know why we're not making one today, I guess, is my question. Like, I, I, I don't know why we're not just taking up Colleen's amendment, either agreeing with it or not. And then if we do, then we change the motion to.
Well, I would, I, I, I would like us, as, as chair, I would like us to put forward a motion tonight and, and see where it lands. And obviously, that will provide direction over the next couple of weeks to both the superintendent and myself to take other, other direction. But I don't, I honestly don't feel we're going to get much data out of any surveys, other than maybe anecdotes about, I may or may not take the day off. I mean, you know, you know, you don't, you don't, and, and people may not, people may even feel put upon to even have their public school ask them that question. I have a concern, civil rights-wise, around asking how someone intends to observe their faith in a survey question. I don't like that, to be honest with you. I don't want something coming out of the superintendent's office asking public employees, are you going to observe a holiday?
I don't know.
I, I don't want that.
Yeah, we don't know.
Well, no, but that's the heart of what the question is. Doesn't matter how nice you phrase it, that's the question.
Right, right.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Do you want to get a motion on the floor?
So, Colleen has made a, a motion, or.
Thank you, Greg.
So.
We don't have a motion on the floor for her to amend.
Yeah, we do. We have a motion to approve the calendar.
You, you, you read it.
I didn't think we did that one. I didn't think I'd read that one.
No.
Well, then, why don't, why don't we, okay, that, that's even better, then, we don't have an amendment. Colleen, how about if you make a motion, if, not to put words in your mouth, but if I'm remembering what you, what your intention was, was to have Good Friday in the 2019, 2020 school year as a school day?
Yes.
Was that your intention?
So I can make that motion, even though we do have 9B as a motion?
Yeah, but 9B hasn't been introduced. 9B, these are recommended motions, and they still have to be introduced.
Super, okay, yep, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Colleen makes the motion to remove Good Friday as a holiday, thereby having it as a school day next year.
Okay, yep.
They have to adopt the rest of the calendar.
You want to say, you want to say so moved to that?
I move.
No, I know. But let's, let's, let's do one step at a time.
And then we can do, and then we'll do the full calendar, is that what you're saying?
What I would, what I, what I'm proposing that we do is we, is we address the policy matter around Good Friday as a thing. Because we should address that as a matter and then address the calendar as a separate matter. Now, we've, if we remove from the calendar, then it doesn't come back up as a, as a, as opposed to, you know, one thing. Colleen?
Okay, so I move that the school committee remove Good Friday as a holiday from the 2019, 2020 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion? Everyone understand the motion? It's simply to remove Good Friday as a holiday, thereby having next year a school day. Right?
Right.
All in favor? Opposed? Ooh, three to three, the motion does not pass. Okay. So the recommendation then?
Three, three.
Wasn't it three, three?
Who abstained?
You're not voting in?
I voted.
Oh.
All, all, let's do it over. All in favor? All in favor?
That's four.
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 Four to three. Oh, the motion passes. Very nice.
That was very gracious of you guys.
Very, very nice. Okay, well, that makes, that makes the math easier. Okay.
Like, I thought we were seven.
So now, Good Friday has been removed from the superintendent's calendar.
Right.
Now can we have a motion to present, to approve the calendar as amended?
Right. Move that the school committee approve the 2019, 2000, 2020 school calendar as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It passes four to three. So, Mr. Superintendent, you have a school calendar for next year.
Can I make another motion?
Oh, of course.
So I'd also move that the policy subcommittee consider adopting the language that was presented by the chair tonight as part of an amended policy number nine.
Nine oh six R.
Nine oh six R, yep.
Certainly. Very good, okay. So that, in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Can you just repeat it again?
Yeah, yeah, Greg, please.
Sure. So the motion is to request that the policy subcommittee consider adopting the language that was presented tonight by the chair around religious holidays.
Anti-defamation.
From the Anti-Defamation League as an amendment to policy number.
Nine oh six R.
Nine oh six R.
Thank you.
Motion have been made and seconded. Any further discussion? This is in regard to effectively taking this matter, directing it to the policy subcommittee. Yep. All in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
If I, if I may offer to hand that, which is the Anti-Defamation League statement from Belmont, to the policy committee chair, policy subcommittee chair. Okay. Very good. Well, is there any more hot button issues tonight we'd like to cover? We covered, you know, money, religion, anyone want to talk about politics? How's the president doing? Anyone, anyone? No, no, we're going to behave ourselves last night?
A certain report that's been amended.
Okay. All righty then. Mr. Superintendent, any other, any other matters under item nine?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay, budget matters. Are there any warrants or gifts to approve this evening?
As much as I'd like to extend this meeting, they're on my schedule.
Like, you can't, you can't go, you know, ruffle up a couple, no? All right, all right, stingy. Okay, subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities, Mr. Leakos.
We met, as I mentioned earlier, in the conversation about the budget on Monday morning. And in addition to final conversations about our FY 20 plan, we looked at the fiscal year 2020 town capital plan that includes several school capital projects. And this was discussed last night, some of us were at the town council last night. So have a copy of that if anyone is interested to see what's on for consideration. We have a school bus, HVAC improvements at the high school, new boiler at the Doll Bear, and other capital improvements for the schools. But if anyone's interested in seeing this, Doug, you and Mike can provide a copy of this to the whole school committee.
I think we'll probably get a packet.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, in that list, if there were any tier one priorities that did not make it, I'd like, like to get a comparison.
Sure.
Okay.
And we met our new facilities director, which was great, yeah.
Is he going to come to us?
Glad to have him on board, yeah.
Excuse me?
You're going to have him come meet us anytime?
Sure.
All right. Maybe we can put that on the next meeting.
That'd be great.
All right, excellent. Labor relations, I've asked for a brief executive session at the end of this meeting for that purpose, so I'll move along to policy communications. Mr. Callahan.
Wow, looks like we have some work.
Yes, finally, something to do. Put your teeth into it, religious holidays, yummy.
I, I, I believe next week is kind of too packed for, with the, I don't know, that's, actually, next week, next week, it's, this week it's packed, so.
Next week opens right up.
If members of the policy committee can let me know their availability next week, we'd try to get together next week. Because I want to work on formalizing concussion policy, that, you know, we have a practice, but we don't have a policy in our policy book. And we can work on this, Anti-Defamation Language. And I think you had one more, didn't you?
Concussions.
No, wait, I said that, but I thought there was a third one.
I don't remember.
Okay, so.
Maybe he has a concussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, let me know your availability next week.
Jesus Christ. Okay.
Okay.
All right, very good. Student services, Ms. Fordia.
Right. We, we haven't actually met. I, I was actually thinking a little bit about Doug and his whirlwind schedule, so maybe Doug, you could just kind of give me an idea of when things open up a little bit more for you.
Sure.
August, okay.
I can do that.
August 11th and 12th. You get this 24-hour window.
That's when he's open. Awesome.
That's when he's on vacation.
And then, and then we can, we can reconvene. But I, I wanted you to get through the, the budget cycle before we have you do more surveys.
Okay. Item 12, future dates. For our special meeting next week, I do ask, I know, a couple of you responded this afternoon to that question I'd asked, if everyone could chime in with what might be your two best choices, or whatever you're, whatever you're comfortable with, with sharing, and then we'll land where we, best we can. A question that Chris had, which is a great one, which I apologize for not putting in the email in the first place, was approximately how long such a meeting might be. This, again, will be the only agenda item, so that in and of itself likely won't make it very long. But, you know, it, it, I speculate an hour, or probably more than likely less. But if perhaps we need to put a time aside, we should probably be thinking an hour, but it's quite likely that, that we would be quite efficient in that meeting. So, but please respond, so I have some guidance on what works for everyone. The next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, two weeks from tonight, April 9th. Okay. Yes, which is Greg and RJ's last meeting, April 9th, two weeks from tonight.
Can you see the smile emerging on RJ's face?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, anyways, school committee comments going around the table. Amy?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Tapped out, actually, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm awesome.
You're all set? Greg?
So, we got a notice from Tom Bankert, our director of visual and performing arts, that Wakefield Public Schools has been honored once again with the best community, as a best community for music education from the NAMM Foundation, one of 4% of districts across the nation, one of 14 schools, uh, school districts in Massachusetts receiving the prestigious award 2018. It's happened so many times, in some ways, we take it for granted, but we shouldn't. Our commitment to music education is so wonderful and something to cherish, and so congratulations to our entire district, but especially to Tom, the music educators, and our music students for this amazing accomplishment once again.
Here, here. Thank you.
I echo that, that, you know, Tom certainly has assembled a, an outstanding department. Since, since he came, he has entirely rebuilt the, the music department, and we have the envy of most communities.
Indeed. Any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just going to agree with Mr. Callahan.
Please.
Mr. Bankert has been really remarkable. You know, the, the hours that he puts into his work, and the commitment to just really building a, a great program, and really hiring, hiring remarkable, talented teachers has really just paid a dividend for our, for our students and our community. So thank you to Tom.
Here, here. Colleen?
No further comment.
RJ?
Thank you.
Very good. So, the only thing I want to say is just a round thank you to everyone for, granted, it's a two-hour-plus meeting, but we had some hefty things to discuss tonight. I think we had.
It's not 11.
It's not 11, I know it. Not like, not like the good old days.
Last night.
Yeah, well, that's true. So, but no, I think we had a robust conversation and the types of conversations that should be had around this table, in, in discussing, debating, sharing ideas. I think that's exactly what this public forum is for, and what us as elected officials are elected to do. So I thank everyone for this participation over the last couple hours and in the last several months. As, as has been requested by the Labor Relations Subcommittee, we're asking to go into an executive session. I, as the, the chair, will declare, as I do, that we would be going into executive session to discuss, which the motion will speak to in a minute, collective bargaining strategies, to update the committee on same, that we would return to open session for the sole purpose of adjourning.
Could you tell me what unit you'll be discussing?
We will be discussing Unit A.
Okay.
And.
That's all I need to know.
Yes, indeed you do. But could you read the motion nonetheless?
I think so. Move the school committee enter into executive session, for the purpose of which is to update and review with the school committee strategy regarding collective bargaining and contract negotiations with school district unions.